All right, thank you very much. I'd like to declare this meeting back in session. We're going to start off with the Common Council Committee and Liaison Appointments, and then we're going to go into the regular order of business. Carlyle, please.
Finance Audit Committee Chair Douglas Coop. Members Reynolds Scott Childress, Tony Davis, Patrick O'Reilly, Stephen Shabbett. General Government Public Safety Committee Chair Steve Shabbett. Members Jeffrey Morell, Reynolds Scott Childress, Rita Worthington, Andrea Schott. Laws and Rules Cable Committee Chair Bill Carey. Members Jeffrey Morell, Douglas Coop, Reynolds Scott Childress, Patrick O'Reilly. Community Development Committee Chair Tony Davis. Members Jeffrey Morell, Rita Worthington, Bill Carey, Andrea Schott. 2018 Common Council Liaison Appointments. Fire Board Tony Davis. Water Board Jeffrey Ventura Morell. Recreation Steve Shabbett. Planning Board Reynolds Scott Childress. Zoning Board Bill Carey. Veterans Organizations Bill Carey. Library Rita Worthington. Uptown Business Association Douglas Coop. Midtown Business Association Rita Worthington. Rondout Business Association Steve Shabbett. Public Works Patrick O'Reilly. Kingston Local Development Corp Andrea Schott. Deed Stadium Commission Steve Shabbett. Heritage Area Commission Reynolds Scott Childress. Police Board Rita Worthington. Economic Development Douglas Coop. Tree Commission Jeffrey Ventura Morell. Parking Working Group Reynolds Scott Childress Doug Coop. Climate Smart Kingston Bill Carey. Conservation Advisory Council Andrea Schott. Housing Tony Davis. Arts Commission Andrea Schott. Central Fire Station Work Group Steve Shabbett, Douglas Coop, Tony Davis.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same?
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is adopted eight-zero. Can I get a motion dispensed at the reading of the general bills?
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adopted eight-zero. We now enter into the public speaking portion of this meeting. Council has set aside a thirty-minute allotment time for this purpose. Please give your name and address at the podium and direct your comments to the council First speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is R. Bruce McLean. I've been a resident of this city for sixty-five years. Before, I'm credited with being a former Republican chairman. With the temperatures being as cold as they have been over the last week or two, I'm reminded that forty years ago next week, I spent an entire Sunday night and Monday at a fire as a volunteer fireman in the city of Kingston, not coming from outside the city, in temperatures that were twenty degrees below zero at the former Beef House on Broadway and St. James Street. The snow was probably up to my waist. The catch basins were full. And it is well documented in the Daily Freeman, as well as the Fireman's Museum, how difficult a fire that was and how difficult it was to fight it. And I did that for nothing for this city. So that's where I come from. Now, I'm here tonight to talk to you about pilots. The pilots, to me, are an issue that are pretty important. In December, you gave a pilot to a company that's buying two buildings, one Yasmin Tower and the other the Governor Clinton. Well, why would you buy a building that you didn't come to the government for to borrow money to make improvements? If that's the fact of the matter, you're paying too much for the building. Now, quite frankly, it's also documented in the Daily Freeman back in the early seventies that these buildings do not meet the fire code. There are only two stand pipes in those buildings where there were supposed to be three. The mayor at the time gave the developer a waiver on it and fired the building inspector or removed him from his duties because he didn't go along with it. So the one building has had fire codes for thirty or forty years. Today, I read where the county, last night, the lady there, let me just find it. Maggie Mayer says, "The boilers aren't working. We won't have running mice in the building. We will have electricity permanently instead of being interrupted. We won't have on and off heat." Well, where is our building department at these buildings? Why aren't they inspecting them? Because these are all fire code and building department violations, and you're not doing nothing about it. I just don't understand. And now you've turned around and given them a pilot, given them free money. The controller this morning, Denapoli, said he's very concerned about the sales tax. Well, the sales tax involves, is involved in these pilots. So every time you give them a pilot, the controller, Denapoli, gets less sales tax money, and he's already said the sales tax money is going down. I just don't understand what you're doing. The Alms House, that's a disaster up there. But I'm not here to talk about the Alms House. I'm here to talk about this other deal that you've done. They don't need a pilot. You've done the wrong thing, and quite frankly, the only people that need pilots is down at Stewart Airport so you can get an airport in here, so you can get some industry in here, and so you can get some people in here to walk around and do business. Now, I think I've said enough, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much, Joseph DeFalco. And I live at 66 Glen Street, and I've been a resident of Kingston since 1953. Since you touched on the pilots, I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. Because when you sacrifice the taxes that you don't receive from these pilots, somebody has to pay for them. So you bill the non-Homestead property owners for this loss, okay? Then the non-Homestead property owners come down to City Hall, "Oh, why can't we pay more than the Homestead people? It's not right." So then you come up with this equalization, and you raise the taxes on everybody. So everybody pays for this. And a thirty-five-year pilot, these improvements that they're going to make will be worn out in thirty-five years. Our kids will be paying for this. I didn't come up here to talk about that. I came up here to talk about the budget and the process. What a disgrace the process was. I had to sit there for forty-five minutes listening to them deliberate $10,000 when there's $500,000 worth of zero net worth jobs in that budget that were identified in previous budget processes and taken out. Now, you know which ones they are, Mr. President, because they clearly do not belong in a municipality budget. And you recognize this. They belong in the school system budget. Why do I pay somebody from City Hall to go to the town of Ulster with a box turtle to teach environmental education? Why do I pay someone to go to the Bailey School, fifth grade, and teach recycling? That's not our job. And we're paying for that. And I was at the meeting last night, and they went into some sort of closed-door session. Well, let me tell you, there's only one person in this room other than myself that has attended more council meetings than anyone. And this administration has gone into more closed-door sessions than any administration has done in the past twenty-five years. That's disgraceful. That's not transparent, okay? One more thing. This Alms House issue, this Alms House, it's been a disgrace from the beginning. It's been a backdoor closed-door meeting from the get-go, okay? And if you have any sense, there's people on this council that are not familiar with the facts, and that should be sent back to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good evening. My name is Matt Colangelo. I live in Ward Three. I'm fortunate enough to live next to Mr. DeFalco. He's actually my neighbor, so I get a little bit of the head start on his dialogues every time he comes. But I just wanted to take a moment to just say that I think we had two great candidates for aldermen in this election. I'm very fortunate to have Rennie as our alderman. I know Ellen quite well. She's my neighbor. So I was very lucky to have two strong candidates that ran, so I'm very happy to have Rennie as well. But I was here kind of just to elaborate on a little bit of what Mr. DeFalco said about the proposal regarding the vote with the Alms House at the range of Flatbush. I heard a lot of talk tonight about moving forward, community involvement. I think that starts with listening, you know, listening to the community. I think the community has done a lot of that. It's been a very contentious issue. But in order to move forward and look ahead, it makes me wonder why we're willing to look back on a vote that occurred in July as justifying this proposal as opposed to moving forward and sending it back to committee for discussion so that we can involve the community again and have an opportunity to hear their concerns, just as the agenda for Mr. my alderman has proposed with involving the community. I think that would really serve that purpose quite well, and I think it would really set the new year off in the right direction and will allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ellen DeFalco. I live at 66 Glen Street in the city of Kingston. Council president, alderman, members of the press and public. I'd like to read a brief message to you. Attorney-client privilege is an American legal concept that protects certain communications between a client and his or her attorney and prevents the attorney from being compelled to testify to these communications in court. Now, I stood before you last July and went on record witnessing that this council goes behind closed doors for private attorney-client privilege. Last night during caucus, one attorney stated that if you wanted to discuss the judge's decision regarding the zoning change and supermajority vote on the Alms House, you could go into executive session. Yet the other attorney quickly chimed in and stated, "Oh, no, this is a private conversation, and it would be attorney-client privilege." Let me be clear that Corporation Council attorneys represent us, the residents of the city, or if you will, clients. And you, as council members, represent us. There's no pending litigation, and there's certainly no secrecy regarding this case. It's been publicized in the local press, and the mayor has vocalized that there will be no further action taken by Corporation Council. When a public body is discussing public business, this discussion should be held in an open forum. The residents of this city expect nothing less when this administration has professed that they will practice transparency and open government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Ruah. I live in Ward Nine on West Chestnut Street. First, I want to congratulate each alderman. I know that everyone waged a tough campaign. But regardless of whether you had an R or D or any other letter behind your name, everybody's campaign promised one consistent thing, which was open and transparent governance. So when I saw the agenda for tonight's meeting, I had hoped that Item N was going to be a statement from the administration clarifying that Rupko's zoning request was being sent back to Laws and Rules for discussion for the benefit of new aldermen, and then back to full common council for a revote. I learned last night, however, that Corporate Counsel called for yet another closed-door session, which Ellen just referred to, to discuss Rupko's zoning request, and in that letter N plans to simply declare later tonight that the majority vote taken in July is now in effect. I've spoken with, this evening I spoke with five aldermen who had not had a chance to read the judge's decision, relying on Corporate Counsel's reading, as I would have if I were in their shoes. So to better frame this discussion, let me read from the judge's ruling. On page one, the judge lists Rupko's complaint to include two requests. The first, the judge is asked to annul the petition. And the second, he's asked to rule that the majority vote from July 2017 be enacted. But the judge's decision on page seven only addresses the first request. It reads, this is verbatim, quote, "Complaint is granted to the extent of annuling respondents," that's the city, "annuling respondents' determination that the supermajority threshold was needed and is otherwise denied." So in other words, the judge never addressed the five-four vote. I would suggest that Judge Mott is an experienced wordsmith, and this is not an accidental omission. Several attorneys who do not work for the mayor have suggested that the judge did not rule on this original vote on talk shows over the weekend because the vote was taken under different pretenses. The five who voted for the zoning change in July knew their votes would have no effect since everyone knew that four aldermen were voting against the change. I was here for the meeting. The four that voted against it got up and said, "I'm against it, and I'm going to vote no." So no one knows truly how these five aldermen would have voted, had their votes carried political consequences. So the only solution would seem to ensure, to ensure an open, transparent, and fair governance would be to hold a revote after appropriate open and public hearings. So I'm hoping that our new common council is going to show its resolve and represent its constituents tonight. Any alderman can introduce a resolution to move Rupko's zoning request back to Laws and Rules for open discussion and then a revote. Needs a second and then a majority vote. Tony Davis and Bill Carey voted against the zoning request in July, and I'm told would vote against it again, and certainly would seem to be willing to second a resolution. Patrick O'Reilly won the seventh ward with more votes than any other alderman, including the majority leader, largely due to his opposition to Rupko's proposed Alms House use. He would be a logical one to propose such a resolution. New aldermen like Jeffrey Ventura Morell, Andrea Schott, Rita Worthington are strong, independent thinkers who, I have faith, will do what is right for the city of Kingston and not bow to pressure from Corporation Council nor a larger entity like Rupko. Other aldermen should have no objection to returning this issue to committee so that new aldermen can be brought up to speed on all these issues, pro and con, and then revote. So in conclusion, Jim Noble is an old-time friend but does not like to be told what to do, and I don't think he'll argue with me on that. And he should not let Rupko's large cash war chest scare him. Sure, Rupko's fund balance is almost three times that of the city of Kingston. I get it. But deciding to not have a revote because of fear of a lawsuit from a larger corporate entity isn't what is in the better interests of the city of Kingston. Let's see if Jim agrees and leads the common council to do what is fair, transparent, and appropriate for the voters of the city of Kingston tonight, which is to return the matter of Rupko's request for a zoning amendment back to committee and then a revote. Just do what's right. Rupko shouldn't object to an open, transparent, and fair review of their zoning request, should they? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. That concludes the public speaking portion for this evening. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, so wait, after Mary Ann's finished, I need you to...
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Mills. I reside in Ward Seven, 61 Tammany Street, Kingston, New York. I concur with what Vincent Ruah just said, and that open-mindedness has to be given to the common council. And for those that don't know what's going on with this, in a couple of hours last night and not even reading what the judge's decision was, in my eyes is not a valid cast of your concern to what this project is. Again, the project is about rezoning, and I had suggested months ago with our comprehensive plan that we wait until our rezoning portion of the comprehensive plan has been completed, and at that time, apply what was developed in that zoning and apply it to the Alms House. Obviously, nobody agreed with that because it didn't go anywhere, and it is something that has been done in other communities. And while the outcome was for or against, it was something that the communities waited to do and use the zoning that we put on the books. I do find it perplexing, however, that the petitioners submitted the petitions. Our Corporation Council said it was a valid petition that was submitted. I also find it perplexing that I inquired as to why the city was not appealing the decision. I was told there were deficiencies, and that's what we expected. Well, if that's what you expected, I, as a member of the common council at that time, and I'm not sure if any of you were, advised that we expected that outcome and that we weren't going to do anything. We weren't going to take a look at it and see why. We expected that, and that's all we're going to do. I was told that the notary information was incorrect. Well, when you review the twelve signatures that went in on that, nine were valid, and the percentage of that comes out to seventy-five percent of a valid petition filed. And I inquired since December 31st with Corporation Council, and to date, I have yet to get an answer as to what the city's response is and if they're going to release a statement stating that they knew, telling us it was valid, but then that's what the outcome was. Corporation Council of the city of Kingston, you're supposed to represent the taxpayers of the city of Kingston and not Rupko. They have their own attorneys to do that. Thank you.
My name is Gloria Waslin, and I want to congratulate everybody who's doing such good public service. Thank you to the newcomers, and thank you for those who have been serving Kingston and the wider community for years. Happy New Year. I actually believe that there are two elements in taking a look at anything that's legal. One is the spirit, one is the letter. And whether you're talking about the Bible, law, or any kind of statement, there's a context, an intent, and I think if you take a look at law within a wider framework, as the mayor was talking about, he's looking at neighborhoods as a whole, looking at what benefits the greater community in Kingston, all of Kingston, and all of the surrounding communities to be healthy and to represent all of our constituents. So I just wanted to invite everybody to take a look with an open mind and mostly an open heart in how you evaluate the data that's presented to you. Statistics can go a lot of different ways, but we have to lead with our heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close the public speaking portion?
Hi, good evening. I'll make this very brief. First of all, I want to congratulate the new councilmen, the new members of the common council. It's a terrific thing, and I appreciate your service. One thing, Brian Wallman, 37 Abbey Street, Kingston, New York. I'm also the county legislator from the Seventh District, representing the Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Wards in the city of Kingston. As, when I wanted to decide to run for office, one of the things I thought about was, how can I make a mark? What decisions will I make that could make a mark? And I think it's very fortunate for the members of our council tonight because in your first meeting of the year, you're going to be able to make a lasting mark for the city of Kingston, a mark that will last for generations. If your decision this evening, whether or not to refer the matter of 300 Flatbush Avenue, the old infirmary, or now what is called the Alms House, back to Laws and Rules, will have a lasting effect on our neighborhood and our city. It happens to be a gateway entrance to the city of Kingston, and I think all due consideration needs to be paid for this decision, paid for this decision, because it will have a lasting effect for many, many generations. And as I said to my neighbors as I was running for this office, the office I currently hold, is that the most important decision, the most important outcome regarding this piece of property is that we get it right, and we get it right for the neighborhood and for the city as a whole. So I'd urge you, particularly, it's interesting this year, and on the county legislature, there are twenty-three members in the body, and there are eight new members, fully, over a third. In this body, there are four new members, almost half. These people deserve to have a voice in this very important decision that will last for multiple generations in our city, and I urge you, please, to refer it back to the committee. And thank you for your intention, and have a good night, and wish you all the very best of success for your new term. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I now declare the public speaking portion of the meeting closed. We now enter into Claims and Communications. Hearing no discussion, I'll be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion dispensed with the second reading of the general bills and pay same?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted eight-zero. We now enter into Report of Committees. Starting with Resolution Number Six.
Resolution Number Six of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the city of Kingston, New York, to extend unpaid water and sewer rents on the general tax rolls.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution is adopted eight-zero. We now go to Resolution Number Seven.
Resolution Number Seven of 2018, Resolution of the Common Council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the Corporation Council to expend funds and execute documents associated with assessment of the Washington Avenue Tunnel routing and repair work.
On the question, hearing no... Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move on to resolution number eight.
Resolution number eight of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, accepting the 2016 independent audit report as prepared by RBT CPAs.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number nine.
Resolution number nine of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 Department of Public Works budget.
On the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 10.
Resolution number 10 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for an address change on North Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 11.
Resolution number 11 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 wastewater treatment facility budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 12.
Resolution number 12 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2018 Corporation Council budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 13.
Resolution number 13 of 2018, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for transfers to the 2017 Corporation Council budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 14.
Resolution number 14 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Brewster Street.
On the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move to resolution number 15.
Resolution number 15 of 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, adding handicap parking on Amsterdam Avenue.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. We now move on to local law number one. Second reading, vote.
Local law one of 2018, local law of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending section 360, article 2, 360 dot 17 dot 1, Cold War veterans exemption of the code of the city of Kingston.
Now, this is a long roll. No?
No.
No? Okay. On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight-zero. That concludes the committee reports for the evening. Okay, so we now enter into statement regarding resolution 149 of 217. I, I've heard you out there, and I, I have to do what I think is best for the city of Kingston as far as legal issue. And I'm just going to read my statement, and then I'm, actually, I'm thinking about reading what the council was given the night before they voted on this issue. Pursuant the decision of Justice Richard Mott entered on December 19th, 2017, finding that certain protest petitions were invalid and further finding that a supermajority was not required. And in accordance with the written instructions to the council prior to the vote of the council on July 11th, 2011, the petition filed by Rupco seeking to rezone 300 Flatbush Avenue to R6 is hereby granted by a single majority vote of 5-4. After consultation with council and review of the written decisions of Justice Mott, there is no grounds or authority for the present council to revote upon a petition that was properly considered and voted upon by the previous council. So that's the statement, and I, I just want to read the last paragraph of information we were given the night before we voted. Please be advised that the applicant has the right to challenge the petition in Supreme Court, and if successful, a simple majority may be deemed sufficient. As such, our office urges all council members to proceed with the vote with the understanding that the final decision regarding the necessary percentages will likely be determined in court after the vote is taken. So just for clarification. So we're at the adjournment point. Yes, Patrick? Patrick O'Reilly?
Mr. President. I'd like, I'm new to the council, and hopefully I, I'll help you get through this, but I'd like to propose a resolution.
You can use your microphone.
Yeah. I am.
You're usually loud at the conference.
It should be on.
Um, I'd like to propose that we have a resolution to go back to committee on what you just talked about, the Alms House, of several reasons. The judge's decision was not clear to me and probably others. I haven't even had a chance to look at it myself personally, as whether or not we can vote on this coming up. Also, my constituents are very concerned about this as it affects my neighborhood. So this is something that's here to my heart and, and others, other aldermen here and others in the, in Kingston, New York. So I ask you to consider a resolution, to go back to committee and, and take a look at this really seriously. Why can't, let's do this. Take a look at this. I, I don't think Rupco should have any problem us taking a look at this and, and taking a good look at it, making sure it's done right, you know? Make sure this thing is properly done so that we can say we did everything in our power to make sure that this property was preserved in a way that it should be for the citizens of Kingston, New York.
Okay. So just so you know, we, we are not acting on a resolution right now, so there would really be nothing to send back. And as far as generating some kind of resolution, I mean, I'm going to have to refer the Corp Counsel. Would, would that be legal or to refer? I think he would be trying to refer back something we already voted on in 217.
Yeah, I mean, that's a concluded matter.
That's a concluded matter, so legally you would advise that you can't do it, is what you think?
I don't know under what basis at this point that could be revised.
So, so I, I would have to rule that out of order because he doesn't, we, there is no legal basis that we could refer back your resolution. It was the Corp Counsel's opinion.
Can I, can you write a protest up? Any way?
I'm, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Nope. But if you want to write me a communication that would possibly send it to committee, we could do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
You're very welcome.
Mr. President?
Okay. So it's, it's really not open for discussion, this, this, it was just a statement being written, and there's no rules for that, but I just let Patrick have a few words on that. So we're, we're actually standing at motion to adjourn. So does anybody have any people they'd like to adjourn in memory of or anything like that at this time? Alderman Davis.
So I would like to close this meeting in memory of Anthony William Dancy Jr., who died December 29th, 2017, at their, at Strong Memorial Hospital in Rochester, New York. Me and my wife know the family well, and Mary Ann Mills, the former, all the, all the women, it was her grandson. And he fought a tough battle with the, with the disease. He was born February 3rd, 2017, in Rhinebeck, New York. He was the son of Anthony William M. Dancy and Sarah Marie Schatzel. And it goes on to say that he, he was born flawless and perfect, one amazed his parents from the very start. He was known as daddy's best friend and mama's little boy and his buddy's partner for life. Anthony L.A., while his time on earth was short, this impact was unmeasurable. He was a strong will, fought till the very end. Surviving along with his parents is his big brother Ezra Cathalvo, his paternal grandparents, Mary Ann Mills and Fred Hetner, Bill and Pam Schatzel, and paternal grandparents Alonso and Victoria Dancy, and Bernadette Cathalvo and Diva Ayers, and many godparents, aunts and uncles. And he was on this earth for a short period of time, and, but he had a great impact on the family and friends of this family, and he would be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to add my condolences and my name also to that motion. Anyone else before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Seeing no one else, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hereby stand adjourned until the next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.